So, we are ready to begin, whenever you're ready, Chair.
And we're on, we're ready to go on TV?
Yes, we are.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I will bring the meeting of the September 21st, 2020, a meeting of the San Carlos Planning Commission to order. We'll begin this evening like we begin every evening with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Lisa, if I could have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Dugan?
Here.
Commissioner Yakapony?
Here.
Commissioner Bradley is absent this evening. Vice Chair Ruth?
Present.
And Chair Garvey?
Here. All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The Commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. However, the Commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on our future Commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Is there anyone in the waiting room who wishes to speak this evening on an item that is not on the, on the agenda?
There is one caller.
All right, caller. Welcome, and you may begin your comments at any time, and you will have about two minutes. Thank you.
Caller ending in 859.
Yes, hi, I stand by Alexandria.
You are with Alexandria, and you, you would like to make a comment on an item that's not on the agenda? Or might you be here for one of the public hearings that's coming up?
I'm here for one of the public hearings.
All right, I think we'll get to your, and we'll be giving you an opportunity to comment under Agenda Item 6A, and we'll be getting to that shortly, and you'll have an opportunity to call in at that time and make a comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is, is approval of the minutes from the September 8th, 2020 meeting. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any changes to the minutes?
I do not, they look fine to me.
None for me.
And hearing none from Jim, and I didn't have any either, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Dugan, I will move to approve the minutes of our last meeting.
And I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakapony?
Same.
Vice Chair Ruth?
Yes.
And Chair Garvey?
Yes. All right, the next item on the agenda is pu- public hearing. We'll have two public hearings this evening. I'll read a statement that will be for both public hearings. This is the procedure for a public hearing. Staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant will make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed, and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The Commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers will be called upon by the last three digits of their phone number and should state their name prior to addressing the Commission. This will assist staff in preparing the minutes. Does staff have the presentation this evening?
Yes, we do. Lisa Costa-Sanders will be making the presentation this evening.
And, oh, I'm, I'm wrong. I need to first say what, let me just jump back in and say our first public hearing is, I forgot to do that. Our first public hearing is 887 Branston Road, APNs 046140190 and 046140200 and 046140210. Consider a resolution recommending the City Council approve a request for an amendment to the Plan Development Zoning District Ordinance 1531, Associated Plan of Development, and approve the design review for the approval of assigned program. Now, Lisa, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Lisa Costa-Sanders, Principal Planner. The item before you is consideration of a request for an amendment to the Plan Development Zoning District, Associated Plan of Development, and Design Review for the Approval of Assigned Program. The subject site is approximately 7.9 acres in area and is located at the corner of Industrial Road and Branston Avenue. Two new six-story commercial buildings are currently under construction. The total building area combined is 55,000 square feet in area. With the approval of the development, the site was rezoned from general commercial industrial to planned development. In 2016, the city approved the Plan Development Zoning Designation and Plan Development Plan. This also included certification mitigated negative declaration, approval of design review, tenant parcel map, grading and dirt haul, transportation demand management program, as well as protected tree removal. A year later, the property was acquired by Alexandria Real Estate Equities with the intention of construction, constructing the development for life science tenants. That necessitated some minor changes to the building, and they went back and requested in 2018 an amendment to the Plan Development Zoning, Plan Development Plan, and Design Review to accommodate the shift from the approved office buildings to life science use. The approved Plan Development Plan, however, did not include assigned program. The applicant at this time is requesting an amendment to the Plan Development Zoning, Plan Development Plan, and Design Review for the Approval of Assigned Program. And these are all the signs that are included in the calculations for onsite signage. It includes a monument sign, building identity sign, identity at the entrance, building mounted tenant signs, a total of six of those, campus identity sign, as well as a project identity sign at the garage. And I will walk through each of those signs. So first off is the monument sign, and this is a proposed adjacent to the driveway entrance at the southern end of the site along Industrial Road. The dimensions of the sign complies with the city's sign ordinance. It is proposed at 6 feet 6 inches tall, where the code max for a monument sign is 8 feet in height. And then the sign area is proposed at 76 square feet. And so that's the design, and you see at two different angles of that monument sign. The next sign are the freestanding directional signs. They're proposed at several areas internal to the site to provide direction to the buildings. The city's maximum sign area is 4 square feet in area for directional signage, and that's considered exempt from the overall sign area on the site. These signs are proposed to be 5 square feet in area for the display, the signage display area, but at a height of 15 feet. And the city code actually does not specify a height limit. The next are the wall signs, so these are the building-mounted signs. And the applicant proposes three wall signs mounted on the roof screen of each building for a total of six signs for the property. So three signs on each building, there's two buildings. Each sign would be 100 square feet each, so that total signage area would be 600 square feet for these wall signs. The city's code established a maximum sign area of 100 square feet per tenant sign, but does not allow signs above the roof line. Due to the unique design of this building facade, you see the articulating windows that move on the facade, it is not feasible to locate a wall sign. So the applicant has requested that the signs be placed on the roof screen that screens in the equipment. So this is the view of the building. That would be the south building at 835 Industrial Road. And as you see, the signs primarily face Highway 101. There are no signs that face Industrial Road. So at the request of the applicant, excuse me, at the request of staff, the applicant did modify one of the signs, the one that's labeled as Pinnacle Biotech, was closer to the corner, and staff felt that the signage was a bit cluttered from that view, and so they were able to move that to the west or inward on the site to give a little more space between the signage. And we appreciated that change. And then the next would be the building-mounted signs on the adjacent building. So this would be the north building at 825 Industrial Road. And this is the facade you would see from the Highway 101 frontage. Again, no signs are proposed to face west or towards Industrial Road. And then the next slide shows the same building, but showing that north-facing sign. Again, they were able to accommodate moving it inwards on the site, so as not to kind of clutter that corner view. And then finally, we have the campus identity sign. This is proposed at the parking structure, and this again faces, faces Highway 101. And they are proposing a campus identity sign. The next slide shows a more zoomed-in version. So the sign is proposed with a total area of 202 square feet. That includes 136 square feet of text and a 66-square-foot logo. The identity sign is included within the total sign area calculations for the site. The project, as I indicated, requires a proposed sign program, City Council approval of amendment to the Plan Development Zoning and Plan Development Permit with a recommendation from the Planning Commission. If you can move the slide, thank you. The change to the Plan Development Zoning to approve the sign program with a total sign area of 998 square feet and allows signage to be located on the roof screen. The public notice was mailed to all property owners within 300 feet of the site on September 8th and published in the newspaper on September 10th. Staff has not received any comments on this project to date. And then we do have the formal motion. Should you choose to make it this evening, we have it in the form of two motions. And one is that recommendation to the City Council, and the other is the Design Review Approval for the Sign Program that you would be approving at a Planning Commission level. That Design Review Certificate would not be effective until the Plan Development Ordinance was adopted and in effect. So I'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions, and the applicant is also here this evening to respond to any questions. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much, Lisa. That was an excellent presentation. Any questions of Lisa before we see if the applicant would like to say something?
Yes, I have a question, and that is, I think I saw in the packet, information packet, that the signs are internally illuminated. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And is that the standard, standard for, for such, for signs on the buildings along Highway 101? Are, are most of those illuminated, like internally?
We're seeing that most of the signs are internally illuminated. And what we like is the, the individual letters aspect of the sign, and that it's not a solid cabinet sign. But yes, they are internally illuminated. We did talk to the applicant about adjusting the light for a time of darkness, and so the applicant can expand on that, but they are happy to accommodate. And that is something, should the Commission choose to add it, could be a condition imposed in the Design Review Certificate. I believe you've imposed that for pole signs facing 101 in the past, that they be dimmed during certain hours, and maybe I'll, while you're deliberating, I'll look up what those hours were, because I don't recall at this moment.
Was it that they were dimmed late, late in the evening, or I can't remember the, my, I mean, my concern is...
Yeah, I thought it was late in the evening, and I can pull up one of the certificates, I recall the address, and I can see what hours we imposed on that one.
Okay, okay, thank you.
It was, I recall that it was the public storage approval that we'd done previously, and I deferred to Lisa, whether it was midnight or 1 o'clock, something like that.
Yeah, it was, I know it was quite, quite late at night, but I don't recall the exact time. We also did it for the lift sign, and that was at 171 Industrial, so I, I will certainly look that up while the Commission's having its deliberations.
That would be great. I think it's a good idea, and we certainly would want to be consistent.
And as I indicated, all of these signs are facing the freeway. There are not any signs that would be westernly facing, so if you were in the hills in your home, you would not be seeing that signage. It would only be from the freeway view.
Does that apply even for the north-facing signs? I mean, it seems like that's 90 degrees to the freeway, but...
Yeah, I think based on the angle of the sign, it may be difficult, but there could be some of the northern neighbors in the hills that may catch the corner of it. But generally, the signs are facing the east, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions before we hear from the applicant?
Yeah, sure, I had a question. So I guess, you know, it's, it was a nice packet put together. The cover of it and, and the signage, the, I guess, Alexandria district. I guess I was surprised to learn my, my city has a new district. Was, was that derived through any kind of public process or participation by the city? Any outreach, or was that just a applicant-declared new district in, in San Carlos?
Yeah, so that is the applicant's name for this campus. And I believe the application they also have in for review would like to utilize the same name for that campus as well. We do have a few other industrial and business campuses in San Carlos, and there was not community input process for those names. The GW Williams Business Park, Britton Corners, and there's a few others in town. I know San Carlos Marketplace has a name. I don't believe there was community input in those. They're just the, the corporate names that weren't provided.
Are any of those other examples self-declared district of the city?
None of them are districts of the city, and this is also not a district of the city. This is the name the applicant has chosen to give to the campus.
Which says district, okay.
It's not a city-recognized district.
Okay. And I guess I'll ask the applicant further. Okay, thank you.
All right, I'll, any other questions? Hearing none, I'll, I'll ask the applicant to step forward and give us a presentation.
So, good evening, Chairperson Garvey and, and Commissioners. My name is Teresa Nemeth. I'm with Alexandria Real Estate Equities. I'm the Executive Vice President in charge of the region in San Francisco Bay Area. And then with the company since 2005, we've been building out life science campuses for quite some time, both in the Bay Area and around the country. Our latest venture is, as you know, working in San Carlos, because we came upon the opportunity not only to secure this current set of two buildings that you just saw, and maybe Lisa, you could bring up the cover of your presentation, since I think Lisa did an excellent presentation. I didn't have a separate presentation to give. The, the intent here is not just to build two buildings, and the reason that we went ahead and purchased land across the street is really to create a brand-new life science district. Sorry, I keep using that word, because that's the word we've come to. The words that we typically use are more about creating a place. So that's the concept. We have done campuses, we have done centers, we have done... I think those are the names that come to mind. And so we felt that this was a new way of looking at it, and I certainly did not intend, nor did any of us intend, for it to seem arrogant in any way. We're not trying to create any new area of the city. We're trying to provide the opportunity to say that this is a new district for life science and technology in San Carlos. And that was the proposition. It was not, it was not something that we brought to the public, because it's intended to be the name of this land area. And these signs are pursuant to leases that we have either entered into, such as Chemocentrics or Atrica, or that we hope to enter into. Pinnacle is kind of a standing name. It's not a real company, it's just a made-up name. So that would be another company. The two buildings that you see here at the edge of the freeway will have more than these six tenants, but those, that's the maximum amount of signage that we would put on these buildings. The smaller companies that would be housed within this building would probably get their names on the front doors, on the directory of the building. They wouldn't get names on the buildings themselves. So that is the intent here, and we do think that this is a great opportunity for us to attract top-quality science companies to San Carlos. So with that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much, Teresa. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any questions for Alexandria?
Teresa, Jim Yakapony here. Good to see you this evening. One, maybe I'll start with an observation and then the follow-on question. So the observation is driving down the 101 through Silicon Valley. There are many buildings with the tenants having the space to put up their own logo. And in many cases, those are monochromatic rather... And in many cases, those are monochromatic rather than multicolor. Any particular reason that these need to have colors or, yeah, any particular reason we, we couldn't be thinking about this from a monochromatic logo perspective?
Commissioner, this is indicating the exact logos, the corporate logos of those companies. And so they have that, that coloring. So for instance, Atrica has a very almost monochromatic look because that is their corporate logo. Chemocentrics, on the other hand, has that little logo that is colored whereas the letters are in a blue. So it, we're trying to be truthful to their own identity.
Sure. I guess I was just reflecting, I, there are probably IBM in all silver, whereas that might be blue. And, you know, there are likely other Silicon Valley companies up and down the 101 that have been able to keep their logo identity without, I'll say, bringing forward their colors and the variety of color scheme. So I just want to explore that as an option.
Okay, we'll, we'll take that under advisement. I, I understand what you're asking.
And I'm sure we'll talk about it, most of the commissioners.
And this is Commissioner Garvey, just to follow up on that. The large sign that says Alexandria District that is on the, on the 101 facing side of the garage. Is that black? Is that a blue? Can you describe that color in a little bit more detail?
Yes, that is, that is a, a deep, almost a navy blue, dark navy. That is Alexandria's logo color. So if you go on, for instance, our company website, you will see it in that, that very same color.
And to follow up on Commissioner Yakapony's concern, is this all the same color? Or is it, are there different shades there or different colors or just one?
This sign that you're seeing on the screen right now, which says Alexandria District for Science and Technology with the lighthouse logo that had, that circle, partial circle is all one color.
Okay, all right. And I did, I did drive by the building today. I've driven by it many times, but today I was particularly looking at, well, where could we put signs? And I agree, it's a, it's a very handsome building, but one that is difficult to put signs anywhere on the side. So I think the use of that roof screen is, is the best place to put, to put a sign. I also liked that they weren't all crowded onto a corner. I think the pinnacle one may have been separated a little bit from the other two. I think that spacing makes each of the three of those signs look good. I personally don't mind the logo color in the one sign, but I understa, I, I understand the concern that's been raised by, by my fellow commissioner. But in general, I, I like the color tone and I like the logo of Alexandria.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that. I think one thing to point out on this image, if I might, is that as you see on the far left, there is a, a symbol that shows that this is only a partial elevation. That is a very long garage. And so the size of the sign is actually, we worked very hard to make it not too big, but also not too small to not be comprehended as being part of that, that very big area. So that, that continues.
Okay. You were mentioning that the lettering on Alexandria Districts for Science and Technologies would have each individual letter illuminated. What about that little lighthouse that's off to the side? Is the, is there, is, is the light part of that little lighthouse going to be illuminated? That might be.
I have my colleague, Dan Sang, who is the project manager on, on this project. Dan, do you want to speak to this particular sign and its illumination? Can we unmute, Dan? There we go.
I'm muted now. Yes, yes, that's exactly the intent is to eliminate the lights from, and to provide a little bit more graphic to it. And yeah, thank you for picking that up.
So the entire piece will be illuminated, but it's each of those pieces, there isn't a rectangle that's illuminated.
I see. Thank you.
Yeah, hi, John.
Hello, Tom.
Yeah, hi. So, yeah, I'm looking at the cover of your presentation and, you know, and I, and, and I've been on the planning commission since 2018. So I guess these two buildings, 825 and 835 Industrial must have been approved prior to my participation. So this is really my kind of first look at, at, you know, this particular project. And I see the signage and, you know, one could react and say, boy, you know, two buildings doesn't, doesn't a district make? But the cover's interesting. It, I, I see about eight more buildings. Is that, is that how I'm to understand this, throwing into a?
Yeah. Lisa, can you go back to the actual cover of the presentation here, not this image? Because I think that's what the commissioner is addressing. So that is, hmm, there was an.
I don't think I included that graphic on there.
Oh, I see, okay. Are you able to bring it up? Because I think that might be helpful. So Commissioner Dugan, we did buy this parcel of land first. And it was, you're absolutely right, approved by the prior owner, which was Wendy Hill. And they approved the site for seven, on the 7.9 acres with these two buildings. We did actually come back to the planning commission after we purchased that land. And the design was altered because we actually brought in architects to change the, the look, the design of the, the architecture. But in addition to that, we then purchased, and if you see on this map, Industrial Road, across the street, we purchased the entire L3 campus. And then a couple of additional buildings, projects or properties rather, that were within that area. And then the Kelly Moore site. So we actually now have under review with the city, which will be coming in front of you, I'm hoping in about a year, a full master plan for the area between Industrial Road and Old County and Commercial Street and the creek that will in fact have more life science buildings. And that's the intent, that with, together with these two buildings and that whole land area would in fact be a district for life science.
I see. Well, thank you for that. And Lisa, could you try to pull up that cover page? I guess it wasn't included, but I, I really think that's what we're talking about here. It'd be useful to pull that up. Do you know what I'm referring to?
I do, and I don't have, I don't have that. It may take me a minute to pull it over here.
Let me see if I can share my screen perhaps.
You are a co-host, you should be able to do that.
Okay. Are you seeing? Great. There we go.
Orient everyone listening, this is good. You have the pointer, so you can kind of give us the.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely, sure. So the two buildings we are discussing right now are right here, if you see the, the pointer. And Highway 101 is back here. Okay, so you can't in this view see the garage, which is behind the, the two L-shaped buildings because obviously the garage is much shorter. So the signs would be facing 101 that we were, that we're talking about right now, there and there. The, the monument sign that you saw today would be in this corner, almost at the corner of Industrial and Commercial Street. Okay, right here. And then the next development project that we are bringing forward that is, we have an application into the city and review has started and an EIR will be conducted, is this area here, which includes from Industrial Road, which is here in front of these buildings and Commercial Street right here. This image doesn't go all the way to Old County, but it's approximately here that is Old County. And then the creek, which we will be bringing back and creating into an open space, is along this edge.
I see. And how many parcels does that box contain?
That block, it's not so much parcels, but it contains six life science buildings, two parking garages and a community center, which we are, that is what will be a part of the community meetings that we will be having, starting probably in November, early November, to meet with the community about the design. There's a proposed community activity center of some sort. And I've been actually meeting with folks about this individually, just what I can do in this COVID environment. And just find out what the needs of the community might be. I've been hearing things such as a community center or a place for a nonprofit office space or a place for a gathering space for, for almost a performance venue. And even perhaps thinking of it as being an indoor/outdoor performance venue because we are also proposing a very generous open space there at the center. So you're right that the signs are sort of in context of this project. But of course, since this project is not yet approved, we didn't feel like we could present it to you today.
Got it. And I appreciate that. You know, I realize what's before us this evening is fairly narrow. But, you know, I've heard tell of some of the transactions that have gone on over there. And although I'm on the planning commission, this is the very first time I'm actually seeing this. So I appreciate the overview. And so I understand you purchased these two buildings first, that's why they're under construction and further along. Is this other whole district, the rest of the district, is that going to be considered as one application as it's coming through the system? Or is that being submitted kind of one at a time as it's?
No, it, it, it is a, a whole master plan. And so I believe it will be, and Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, a planned development plan for this entire land area?
That's correct. We're considering that entire areas as one project. And the request is for a planned development permit, planned development plan. And then as indicated, a full EIR as well.
Okay. And, and Lisa, just, well, first let me just pause. And I mean, obviously, this is a, a very impressive investment into the city of San Carlos. So, you know, that is, you know, represents a lot of progress perhaps. And, you know, we certainly, you know, are open to folks making investments in our city. Obviously, it's something that needs to involve a thorough public process. Lisa, can, can you just give me, like, what is this process going to look like? I mean, I, you know, I've heard city council talk about subcommittees to think about studying a more specific plan for East San Carlos. Where is that at? And like, how is the planning commission going to interact with that process? And how is the public's opinion going to be expressed here as we get a new district to San Carlos?
So at the city council budget study session, they discussed the possibility of preparing a more detailed study of the entire east side. And so we have anticipated that conversation to continue at their September 28th meeting as to what exactly they would like to study in the east side area. There's several options. One is to just to continue to process these individual projects.
And let me pause. Now, by individual project, you mean all six of these buildings and two parking garages?
No, I'm sorry. We have several projects that are under review by the city. 888 Branston is one that's also under review. 1030 Britain is under review. So we have several projects in addition to this Alexandria development that the city is currently reviewing. And then there's conceptual plans for several more development sites. So at the September 28th meeting, we anticipate receiving some direction from the city council as they go through their budget process. And as this item is not on the agenda, I think our city attorney would advise us that we really can't have a more further discussion on it. But I'd be happy to give you an update after the council provides us some direction and we can do that at your next meeting.
Yeah.
I think, Lisa, I think that's good advice.
That's obviously a lot of, a, a lot going on that I think the planning commission should get regular updates on, so.
Yeah, we can add that to the agenda. We can provide a list of the projects that have been submitted, the projects that are conceptual and also the direction we've received from city council. So I'm happy to work with Lisa to put that on the next available agenda.
Yeah, but what is the status of any kind of, you know, the next step by the city as far as, you know, having a more coherent, specific thought for East San Carlos? Like, are these projects, you know, already further along than that process will, will intersect with or?
We will find out more at that city council meeting.
Yeah, I guess I caution us against going too far down this path away from our agenda item with the signs and, and be mindful that we have a much more narrow agenda item in front of us this evening.
And I certainly appreciate that, Chairman Garvey. But, you know, this is a new district to our town and it's the very first time the planning commission has even seen it. So I think it is worth at least recognizing what, what we're looking at here. So, but understood.
And through the chair, if I may just provide just a little bit of background context, which may jog the commission's memory, is that I think it was about a year ago, the city council adopted its strategic plan. And this is something that they look at every single year. And one of their objectives was to, to, to determine what should or could be done for the east side, given the projects that have been submitted and approved and under construction and other projects that are coming forward. Of course, one of them is the one that we're looking at tonight, at least in concept, right? So that is the city council's strategic objective. And this is something that staff has been working on, but because of COVID-19, it put a pause on how we move forward with that particular objective as the city contemplates its expenditures for the upcoming fiscal year. So this is the reason why we don't know what that's going to look like until September 28th. It has been on the council's strategic objective, at least for about a year. Or at least at the end of last fall, it's almost going to be a year. Just for some, some way of background, thank you.
No, thank you. And that's appreciated. I'll let us return to the agenda. I appreciate your indulgence. I would say, I, you know, from, from my position, I'd be interested in what the other commissioners think. But I do think we need to, you know, as, as the council starts to work on East San Carlos, you know, I think the planning commission needs a role in that. And, and, and that at least at a minimum involves some regular updates of where the city's at in that effort.
Yeah, I would agree. Some, some updates to the commission on what's happening next and what can we expect in the near-term future versus a little bit further out. I think we've had these updates in the past and with COVID, I think we maybe missed one because of, because of COVID. And I appreciate the discussion getting us sort of back on track with regular updates.
Yeah, I would support that as well. A more holistic view of the development is really essential for us to be able to have meaningful input on the individual items as they come in sort of a piecemeal fashion, so.
Yeah, same for me. And I think actually, if I recall our workshop day last year, this was a topic that a number of us had flagged that a different, expanding the interaction between us and the planning, between us and city council and a number of these strategic fronts would be useful. But I actually support Chair Garvey's points. Let's, maybe tonight, we've made the point, let's go back to signs.
Any further questions of Alexandria before we see if there's anyone in the waiting room who'd like to speak on, from the public, who'd like to, to speak?
I, I would just like to get the applicant's perspective on having the.
I would just like to get the applicant's perspective on having the light, the lighted part of it, the elevator, especially for the elevated signs on top of the roof, so that they're not shining brightly all night long. That's a way to reduce light pollution. If we add that into our motion, I think we're we're inclined, we might be, we'll see, once we have our discussion. But it's kind of nice to know if that's good with you.
And maybe applicant respond, the hours that the other signs were required to go dark was 1:00 AM.
Okay.
So thank you, Commissioner, for that question. The the lights, the signs are in on dimmers. So they can be both dimmed and turned off. So that is absolutely doable.
Thank you.
And they could be said, this is Commissioner Garvey, and and not only are they dimmable, but they're timable. You can set them on a timer. If we wanted them to go to dim at 11:00 PM and go off at 1:00 AM, that that you wouldn't have to hire somebody to come in and manually dim. This can all be set up automatically.
It can absolutely be done. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. That may be something that the commission is interested in amending that second motion to include a condition regarding this illumination. Any other questions of Alexandria before we go to the waiting room? All right. If you're interested in making a comment on this item, a screen has just gone up with a phone number. Lisa, is there anyone in the waiting room who'd like to make a comment this evening?
Sarah?
Not at this time.
Let's give it a few more seconds here, maybe 30 more seconds to see if anybody just saw the screen and would like to dial in. All right, Sarah, has anyone entered the waiting room?
No, not at this time.
All right. If if there are no further questions, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move that will close public comment period.
I'm sorry. Yes, close the public comment.
I second that motion.
Lisa, a roll call.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roof?
Yes.
And Chair Garvey?
Yes. All right, we've heard from staff, we've heard from Alexandria. We've discussed a lot of pertinent issues on this issue. Any discussion who'd like to kick it off as we deliberate this issue?
Yeah, I'll jump in if you don't mind. Two, two thoughts. First is, you know, I'll reiterate what I'd shared earlier and observation. And it's not universal, but you drive from South San Francisco to San Jose, and there is a variety of treatments of logos. And, you know, I'm not opposed to having corporate logos in color. It just, you know, it's a billboard, and we should just know that sort of a prominent view in San Carlos is going to have a variety of, a variety of colors out there. And, you know, will look like a bit of an advert in that regard. Not my personal preference, I would say. I think, so I'll I'll put that out there, welcome others' thoughts. I think maybe something I would say I feel more strongly about is, and a couple of you have raised the garage sign, the notion of Alexandria District, the notion of highlighting and advertising for a brand new district, which I'll say is uncertain. It's a probability, maybe it's a possibility. It's not a certainty, and it's not a near term certainty. And, and, you know, being one that would favor fewer signs and fewer lights, the thought is, why now for that particular sign? And wouldn't it be, if we only knew that these were going to be the only two buildings, how might we feel about it? Maybe more appropriate for a region which is all about biotech in San Carlos to be determined. And so, you know, is there a way for us to navigate? Look, if we get there with a bigger project, then, okay, the sign can go on up because it's emblematic of a thing. Today, it's not a thing. So that would be the my, I put that out there for other thoughts on. How would you all think about thinking differently on that garage sign? And then separately from the point I've made on the colors up on the parapet?
Yeah, I'd chime in, Jim, and just say, I guess, you know, I think those are good questions. I would put it to staff. Do we have any say in the colorization of signage? I, I don't think we've ever asked that question. It's not obvious to me we would have that. And I think we're mostly just, you know, and is it true our purview is just location and size? And then, you know, an applicant is free to do what they want to on the sign's surface. What's the right way for me to understand that, Lisa?
Sure, I'd be happy to answer that. This did come up when the commission reviewed the lift pole sign on Industrial Road at 171. And I know there was some concern about the white background and the bright pink lettering. And at that time, the Assistant City Attorney provided comment that we are prohibited from commenting on corporate logo colors and on the messaging. And we really need to focus on the design and the location of the signage. So that was the advice at that time we were provided by the Assistant City Attorney. We cannot comment on the colors of the logos.
And I guess if Greg were here, I would say we've never had something that's six stories above our city before either. So, but that that'd just be a rebuttal. So respecting attorney's advice, understood.
Do we have agreement to have the sign, the lights go off at 1:00 AM, consistent with the condition that we've asked for on other, other signs in that area?
I would support that. I think it's consistent with we've done, as you say, Commissioner Roof with other signs. And it just cuts down on the amount of light pollution that people experience when they're driving on Highway 101 past San Carlos. And 1:00 AM is pretty late. So that's, you know, there's not going to be a ton of traffic.
Yeah, I'll try and say, I mean, that seems reasonable. It's certainly a policy of sorts because we've happened to remember it and apply it when we've got new signs. So I'm generally supportive of that. But I do have just a question of staff. So, I mean, that's not how it's supposed to work. We're not supposed to just remember this stuff and have it come up. So, you know, how do we go through agendizing an update to our lighted sign code so that this, you know, we've gone, I think, through a process to say as a commission, we would like to see restrictions on middle of the night lighted signs. So how do we get that agendized? So we actually update our code so it's not the one of us to remember it and perhaps apply it consistently?
Through the chair, this is Lisa Porras. I would recommend that this is something that the commission can discuss during your mini retreat. I'm going to take the assumption that because we started them last year, we're going to continue with those. I haven't received any, any further direction from our, our city clerk's office on that. But it's my understanding is that the city council is looking for commissions, thoughts, inputs, reflections on a wide range of what's happening here at the city in the context of your, your planning role and authority and planning decisions. So that would be something we can take forth to the city council, but we would need to get the council's direction that we need to move forward and obtain, you know, consultant services so that we can, you know, ensure whenever we update the code, it's not something that staff can do on our own. We're, we're going to need a consultant to do that to make sure that any amendments that we are making are consistent, you know, with laws. So that would be my recommendation. Is it that if the commission as a whole feels strongly that that should be a priority, one of, you know, I mean, of course, there could be other things, but this is something that you'd like to see done in the near term future, then that's something we can take forward to the council.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. You're saying wait till we have another offsite in January to talk about it again?
Our mini retreat, I believe, was held in the fall. So it's October in a couple of weeks. So I think that should be coming up in the near future. So I can double check the dates on that.
Okay. So we have two a year? Because I think, I think I only remember going to one in my two years.
No, we had one. Our first one was last, I want to say, maybe it was October, November of last year.
Okay, I was thinking it was like January, but I'm probably misremembering. So, yeah, if it's in the near future, great. Lisa, if you could please make a note that this should be on our list of things we designated we'd like to talk about. I'll send you an additional list of things that have occurred to me over my last two years.
Thank you.
So as far as a condition for this request, I mentioned consistency, but maybe that's not the entirely relevant. Perhaps just the prominence of this particular building makes me feel that in this particular instance, it's appropriate. So I'm not trying to base the request on any implied general, general strategy or plan for, for lighting timing. But in this case, it's very prominent and high. And it's above the roof line. That's a something that we have to acknowledge. And so having a turn off seems pretty, pretty good.
No, I agree with that. I think it'd be inconsistent if we didn't and how we treated the other applicants over the past six months.
Yeah.
And if I could, Chair Garvey, I'd like to actually maybe make a specific, a second specific proposal, and that is, and that would be to approve the garage sign subject to the timing of, you know, the first construction of the broader project. And therefore specifically, if there is no broader project, then we don't put yet another sign out on the highway that talks about the Alexandria District when, in the instance that there is only an Alexandria building. So I think that it reduces administrative burden. It's, yes, you can go, but yes, you can go when there's something bigger to go with. And if, if there is nothing bigger, like some other additional project, then there's no additional sign. So I'm going to put out, put that one out there for my fellow commissioners.
Are you, you're suggesting approval that, that the approval of the whole sign be conditional?
Ju- just the Alexandria garage sign.
Right, the sign. So you're not talking, because we, we just learned we can't talk about the content of the sign. So we can't say we don't like the word district. But we could say we don't like the sign at all, I guess, is what you're proposing.
Yeah, I think, I just, I'm suggesting that fewer signs, fewer lighted signs better. There is, to the point about there is no district. Okay, but let's just leave it at, when there's something bigger, let's approve something bigger. And let's hold off until then. So yes, to your questions. Approve it conditional on the next stage being approved and started.
I guess I'll jump in here and say, well, how, how big does it have to get? We have two high-rise buildings housing at a minimum three companies, possibly more, that will not get signage on the roof. They'll get signage on the front door. I guess if there, in my mind, had just been one company moving in, then I would agree with you that it may be premature to call this a district since we just have one company moving into these buildings. But we have more than one building and we have at least three companies. It, it, it doesn't seem inconceivable to me that Alexandria may still want to call this the Alexandria District. And as far as the design of the sign, I, I don't have a problem with the design. I think it's very muted and understated. And the location is not crowding everything else that's up there on the roof already. It's separate and apart. And so I don't personally have a problem with the Alexandria sign. I just wonder where is the line, though? If we've made it conditional, what additional step might need to be taken in order for it to be considered a district?
Yeah, good, good question. Thank you. I mean, I would say, keep it simple. They, they own the property. Upon the, you know, the pulling of the first building permit for the next building, that should be fine. And conversely, I, I think if there were only two buildings, then I would have said the tenant logos on the top would be great and support them. And in that case, my own vote would be no for, no for that additional campus sign out on the highway. So.
I definitely understand where you're going with that, Jim. I would just also point out their primary site monument is a big monument to the district as well. So I don't know if your thinking applies to that as well.
No, I, no, that was, that one's great. It's out where people are driving by. Makes complete sense. Just, just the garage.
So the concern is the impression from the drivers on 101.
Yeah, exactly. Again, I think thinking about our city and thinking about not being a billboard through the length of the city as you travel from north to south. It's, I think there's an opportunity to have an impact by not putting yet another sign up. But I'm also mindful that at some point there could be something substantial in the area. And, okay, I, I wouldn't want to be the stuck in concrete person on this. It just strikes me as premature to be looking for that.
Yeah.
I mean, I, reading the, the project description in the handout, it mentions that the city's signage regulations for multi-tenant buildings, you get one sign per tenant and one, one additional sign to identify the project. And so here we have the sign on the parking garage and the monument in front. So that's two. But it's also two buildings. So I'm kind of going in circles here. It doesn't, I guess I'm slightly inclined to say that the signage doesn't seem overly out of scale with six-story buildings. But technically, it's one, one project. And ordinarily, you'd get one project sign, I guess. And so if we're approving both those Alexandria District signs, then that's a concession.
I'll just chime in to say, I mean, I, you know, I, I obviously had a strong reaction to seeing a new district being kind of self-declared. But, uh, you know, our purview, I do think is approving the signs, the sizes and the locations and, uh, you know, I do think they're free to call their project what they want to call it. If it ends up being two buildings, maybe they'll be ridiculed for having such a small district and maybe they'll choose to change the name. But I suppose, um, I'm not sure. I, I, I guess I'm just, uh, sensitive to putting a condition on a sign because we want to control what's being set on that sign. And, and I, you know, I guess I, I, I'm not terribly supportive of that.
I lost, uh, internet connection there for about 15 seconds, so I missed the last sentence or two.
Um, I was just saying, um, I, I, I just had pause that. Am I being heard?
I hear you.
Okay.
Turn off everything. I can't.
Ellen seems to be frozen.
For 30 seconds until we get our chairperson.
I, I, I am now unfrozen. I was frozen for about 90 seconds there, every, and everyone froze. So I'm, I don't know who, what is happening with someone's internet, but somebody is, maybe it's me. Are we back or?
We hear you, Ellen.
Yeah, we hear you.
Do you hear us, Ellen?
Doesn't look, Ellen, if you can hear us, as a suggestion, um, you can turn, uh, your video off. It might make it a little bit easier to keep the connection flowing. Sometimes that works, I've heard.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
You're cutting in and out. I'm, I'm not quite getting it. I'm wondering if I should. Are you saying kill the video?
Yes.
Try that.
What should I do? It's me.
Lisa, send her a note. There we go.
There she goes.
There we go.
Okay, okay.
Better?
Thank you. Now, is that better? Are we back?
We can.
All right. Thank you. Sorry for my technical glitch.
No problem. And just to reiterate, I was saying, uh, I, you know, I certainly have hesitated on the word district as well. But I also hesitate on, you know, putting a condition on a sign because we don't like what it says. Um, I'm not sure we have that purview. So that's my, my, my additional hesitation.
Yeah, and John, just to be very clear, this is not about whether or not the sign is liked for what it says. This is about whether or not, uh, we need yet another sign in San Carlos. And so, uh, again, I'm, my perspective, I, I won't belabor it. I just wanted to be clear on the rationale for the record.
Got it. No, I, I, I support that. If, uh, you know, a, you know, uh, if you, if you could concisely state the condition you would like, um, uh, you know, I'm, uh, supportive of the idea that you're sharing.
Sure, thank you. I, I'll, I'll try it one more time and then, um, and we'll see what happens. And that is, um, I would support all of the signs that are being requested. And with the condition that the garage sign not be installed until such time as the bill, first building permit for the new project across the street is pulled. Let's try that.
Um, and through the chair, if I can make a suggestion. It feels like this would be most appropriate placed in the planned development standards for the property. Alternatively, it could be in the design review certificate. And so, um, you can make a recommendation that the city council include that delay timing in the, um, planned development standards. And then that would be the first building permit for the proposed development at nine eight seven commercial. And then the other condition that was discussed is, um, that the signs shall be dark from 1:00 AM, I guess, until sunrise. And then that would be appropriate in the design review certificate as a condition.
Which I think is the second of the two motions.
That's correct.
Okay. I think that captures what we are trying to say. Any other discussion on any other aspect of this issue? Before we call for a motion?
I guess I'm still wavering a little whether I'm objecting to the, uh, the sign on the parking garage because, um, Alexandria has, that project is quite large in itself and they've got additional plans. And part of the business, I would imagine, is to, um, create, um, some identity, identity for it. And, um, the sign facing the highway, you know, doesn't, doesn't really influence the neighborhood much. And so I'm, I'm a little on the fence, um, perhaps more inclined to, to, to go with the, um, the applicant's, um, plan, um, in that regard. But that's just me. Maybe we should take a straw poll to see where we, where we've landed, yeah, landed on this.
I, I, I think for me, I'm, I'm definitely in favor of amending, um, the second motion to have the lights go dark at 1:00 in the morning. Um, I'm mu- much less in favor of, um, putting a condition regarding the garage sign being held up until the first building permit is pulled. I don't find the sign that offensive. I think it's understated. Uh, we have more than one building and we have at least three tenants. We can't really opine on the name. So I think the design and the location of the sign they're choosing, um, is appropriate even if nothing additional is built.
Yeah, I'll just chime in. I certainly support the first condition. I, I support both conditions. I don't know if we have, uh, a, uh, a majority on, on, on the second condition. So maybe we move past that one. But on the first condition, uh, 1:00 AM, uh, you know, now we have to recall. So when, when can the lights turn back on? Is that 5:00 AM?
I think we can say sunrise.
Sunrise, fair enough.
It'll, the time changes, yeah.
And I'm fully supportive of the, um, the, uh, time for the lights to go off at 1:00 AM.
And do, do we all agree they should turn back on at sunrise? Not before sunrise?
Yeah, I think not before sunrise. My sense is they probably won't turn on until four or five o'clock in the afternoon, because no, if they do turn on, probably no one will see them.
Fair enough. I just, we don't want them to go off at 1:00 AM and back on at 1:15, right? So we gotta.
Oh, that's true, yeah. So sunrise, n- not before sunrise seems a reasonable way to frame that. Any other discussion? All right, I will, um, let's see, we have two motions. Um, I'll entertain a motion on, um, item one. Thank you, Lisa, for putting that on the screen. Who would like to take a stab at?
I can, I can, I, I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending the city council adopt an ordinance amending ordinance 1507 and ordinance 1531 in amending the associated plan of development. And I can do these, to get back to that, right? Uh, I move the planning commission amend the previous design review approval. And then the previous design review approval approve the sign program for the reasons incorporated in the staff report and with the condition in the code compliance certificate. And then this is where we say with the additional condition that the lights go off at 1:00 AM and go on no earlier than sunrise.
Do I have a second? I will second that. Uh, Lisa, can we have a roll call?
Just by point of clarification, that's a second for both motions, correct?
Yes, thank you for, yes.
Okay, I will then take the roll call for, um, the first, uh, motion and then for the second. Is that how the commission would like to proceed? I think that's what we're doing, right?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
This is for the first.
Correct.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ruth?
Yes.
And Chair Garvey?
Yes.
Okay, I'll move on now to call the roll for the second motion on the screen. Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
No.
Vice Chair Ruth?
Yes.
And Chair Garvey?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, everyone. That was a very robust discussion. And I'm really glad we really drilled down into that because it's not only, um, applicable to this project, it's going to be applicable for many projects to come. So I appreciate the discussion. Moving on on the agenda to, and I'm going to try to get my video on and not blow up. Moving on to reports, correspondence and general information, uh, report on recent city council actions. Lisa, anything to report?
Uh, yes, uh, Chair Garvey, we actually have just one more item on the agenda, agenda item six.
Oh, you're right. You're right. I'm sorry.
No problem.
Thank you. Let's move on to the second public hearing. We already read the opening statement regarding public hearings. We will now move on to the second public hearing, general plan conformity determination for capital improvement projects proposed for fiscal year 2021. Does staff have a presentation?
Uh, yes, we do. Good evening, Commissioners. Lisa Porras, Planning Manager for the City of San Carlos. And I will be giving a presentation, um, on this item this evening. The item before you this evening is to determine whether the proposed, uh, capital projects for fiscal year 2021, so that's July 2020 through the end of June 2021, are consistent with the city's general plan. The recommended, uh, proposed recommendation, um, that staff is presenting to the commission this evening is that you adopt a resolution finding the fiscal year 2020 to 2021 capital improvement program is in conformance with the city's general plan. So what we're looking for this evening is to, uh, not necessarily discuss a, a discussion on the budget and the cost, but really to focus on whether the projects, uh, that are part of this year's capital improvement project list, listed to receive funding for the 2021 fiscal year are consistent with the, the goals and policies of the city's general plan. So just for some context, I'd want to, I want to, um, just kind of provide a quick background on the capital improvement program or CIP, uh, before, um, we dive into the report and, and, um, you make the motion, should you choose to make it. Um, the capital improvement crap, program is a five-year expenditure plan that prioritizes and recommends funding for various improvement projects, uh, for the city. And this is, like I said, it's typically a five-year plan. But each time the city council adopts its budget, they're essentially adopting and authorizing expenditure of funds for a certain portion of the CIP. Right now, the budget cycle is, um, a one-year budget cycle and that's was really intended to align with city council terms. That was a conscious decision that's been made, uh, by city management and finance. So the general plan consistency that we're looking for this evening is just for the first year only, which is actually the current year that we are in. Um, and projects that are outlined to receive funding in the remaining four years, of course, could be changed or modified, uh, by future councils. The city council had a study session on the proposed budget recently, um, in August, at the end of August. And, um, as was mentioned earlier this evening on another, uh, project, uh, they will consider formal adoption one week from today on September 28th. And for some legal context, um, state law requires a planning commission to review public works projects to determine conformity with the general plan. Um, as noted here in several bullet points, these are, um, the actions that were required to take, uh, per state law, that the capital improvement program shall be adopted by an annual review that is part of the budget, adopted by resolution of the governing body or the district or local agency. Of course, in this case, it will be our city. Um, we shall not, a city shall not carry out its capital improvement program or any part of the program if it finds that the CIP or part of it is not consistent with the general plan. And then before adopting the CIP or any revision to it, the governing body shall hold at least one public hearing, which is what we're holding here this evening and notice of the time.
I, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just, uh, so this is an annual thing, but I don't recall doing this last year. I'm just, I'm trying to understand how this works.
Yes, we were on a two-year budget cycle.
I see.
Yeah, so, so now we're on the one year. So that's why, um, the commission will see it, um, this evening before the city council adopts it in September. We are, um, you know, as, as is quite obvious, obvious already into the fiscal year. But that is because the budget has been, um, sort of paused and postponed due to COVID. So at the time when the budget would have gone before this planning commission and city council would have been April, May with adoption in June and then take effect in July. But at that time, the city was dealing with the pandemic. So a decision was made to postpone that. So we will formally adopting the budget, uh, for this fiscal year, um, in September. Okay, so the staff report, um, that's in your packet outlines the, uh, the number of projects that are in the CIP or it's an exact list of all the projects that are proposed to rec- receive funding this fiscal year. And, um, my PowerPoint would have been quite long if I included all the general plan goals and objectives and policies. But they are in your packet as was provided in the staff report. But as part of, um, the public hearing, uh, process, I did want to take a moment and kind of walk through a couple of slides that clearly, um, presents and identifies what's actually to receive funding. And a lot of these are ongoing, but some of them are new. From the wastewater or sewer fund, we have an annual sewer rehabilitation program that's receiving funding that's proposed to receive funding in addition to another project titled the sewer system root foaming, which I can't talk about the technical aspects on that one. But again, there are supportive general plan goals and policies, um, to support, you know, uh, a properly clean functioning, uh, infrastructure system for the city. For the gas tax fund, um, there's an annual street resurfacing, um, that we're all familiar with. Um, annual, uh, traffic marking. with, um, annual, uh, traffic markings and stripings that takes place on a regular basis as well as sidewalk repairs and reconstructions. Under the more broad general fund, the capital project fund, we have the annual storm drain improvements, we have the Belmont Creek watershed improvement project. Fire Station sixteen, um, will probably sound familiar to you because it is the project that the planning commission recently reviewed and approved for a new fire station. There's the annual storm drain maintenance, a citywide wayfinding program that's been in the works for some time, um, in terms of making it easier for, for folks to navigate their way through San Carlos, uh, particularly the downtown. There's Burton Avenue and Alameda de los Pollos widening. And then, of course, continuing funding for the ongoing San Carlos Avenue pedestrian safety improvements project. Continuing on with this broad, uh, general fund, capital project fund, our traffic calming improvements, um, there, um, in years past, there was synthetic turf, um, applied to Highlands Park, um, that needs to be replaced. And that has been proposed and presented to the council as part of their study session that they looked at. And then, um, as we talked about this evening, there's, um, a proposal for the East Side Planning Initiative, so we'll hear more from the council on their September twenty-eighth, um, meeting as far as what that exactly will look like and how that will take place. There's the Burton Park batting cages, press retract replacement project, and then, um, wayfinding signage for the new Wheeler Plaza public garage. Um, that's something that, um, as a result of that project being built and under operation built benefit by having some wayfinding signage inside, cameras for the courtyard, and then finally, um, a tool to help the city do its basic operations, a business registration cashier system replacement. And then the last, uh, fund, um, is the housing fund. This has been on the books for some time, um, but this is funding for the Cherry Street below market rate housing acquisition demo and site work project. So this is similar to the eight seventeen walnut project whereby the city, you know, um, hired, um, professional architects and a team to determine, um, the appropriate, um, mix of affordable units, what that would look like, how many could fit on the site. The same will be done for another site here in the city, so that is proposed to receive funds. Uh, so that concludes, uh, the list of projects, um, proposed to receive funding this year. And again, all of the goals and policies and principles of the jump supportive goals, policies and principles of the general plan are provided for in the staff report. And staff finds that these projects are in fact consistent with the general plan. And this is the approved, um, the, excuse me, the recommended motion, should you choose to make it, and I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Uh, Lisa, maybe just one, uh, kind of, uh, bigger picture question, how next year's budget, capital budget or this current year, is it like a lot bigger, a lot smaller than prior years, about the same?
This year's?
Yeah.
Uh, well, because of the pandemic, um, we, um, different city departments were asked to make a reduction to their budget. Um, and I believe it was a ten percent, um, for each and every department. So, um, we, um, made some cuts to our proposed budget and so we're not asking for anything more. Um, it would be a reduced budget therefore, if, uh, because we have a baseline that we're operating from. And anytime we need to make, um, modifications to our baseline, that's part of the budget process where we put in any new and additional requests above and beyond our normal, you know, operating expenses. So this year, in fact, we didn't request anything, we actually had to reduce our budgets by ten percent. So every department went ahead and did that. And that was part of, um, what the city council discussed back on August twenty-fourth and part of what their discussion will be as they consider, um, adoption of the budget on September the twenty-eighth.
Thank you. Hi, could you, um, give us a little more detail on what the citywide wayfinding program would be?
Um, I don't have all of the details for you, um, this evening. Um, I think this is something that's been on the capital improvement project, uh, program for a while. Um, as I mentioned at the beginning, um, it's a five-year program, so some things could have been, um, on the CIP towards the later years in years past, and now it's kind of like coming inching forward to be something that can be looked at receiving funding today. Um, but that's something I can definitely, um, bring back. Um, if there's anything on here where the commission would like more information, again, only a few of these, um, are new projects. Um, if I could, you know, maybe turn your attention to the, um, to the packet, I think it's a few that are, that are new that I could point out to, but certainly for any of these that had been pre-existing, um, on the books for some years prior, uh, we can certainly, um, um, you know, I can certainly make an effort to reach out to other departments and divisions and see if we can get a summary of what those are so that if, or anything that the commission might be interested in that's on this list, we can certainly do that.
I guess if it's ongoing, then I'm comfortable assuming that it's in conformance, um, because it would have been approved previously. So I, I'm not worried, I was mostly just curious what the, um, what the scope of that was.
Yes, and that makes sense and that's perfectly fine, so we would be happy to do that along with some of the other updates that we talked about this evening. So for example, uh, what is new, um, is the press view track replacement, that is new. Um, the Wheeler Plaza garage wayfinding signage installation is new, cameras for the courtyard are new, and then the business registration and cashier system replacement is new. Everything else is ongoing.
Got it, and so Lisa, those were not just new projects, but new projects with enough priority to break through the newfound COVID constraints?
Correct.
Okay.
And Lisa, this is Ellen, ju- just building on that, the, the action that the commission takes this evening to find that this, these list of projects is consistent with the general plan doesn't in any way, um, lock the city council into doing any of these projects or, or even spending the amount that is listed in the spreadsheet in our packet? I think the city council still has the prerogative to adjust or slash those as they see fit. We're charged, as I think I understand it, with simply finding that the goals of the general plan are, are met when looking at this list of proposed capital projects. Have I, have I got that right?
Uh, that's correct, thank you for that clarification and distinction, that was, um, something I was trying to emphasize at the beginning, yes. So even if the council decides this is not approving a project list or any of the funds associated with this list, it's really just to say that if these are the projects that the council has identified that they would like to fund, we are, the, we are, the charge here, here is just to determine that they are consistent with the general plan, which means are there supportive general plan goals and policies and objectives that support these projects? And so what staff does is we look at all of these projects and then we find, we go through the general plan to make sure that these are fulfilling the goals and objectives of that long-term plan.
Any other questions before, of staff, before we see if there's anyone waiting in the waiting room who'd like to speak on this issue?
No questions from me.
Nope, none for me, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right, um, Sarah, uh, is there anyone in the waiting room who would like to speak? And if you're looking on your screen or on your television screen, there are, um, there is a number here that you can call in if you'd like to, uh, make a comment on this item. Sarah, anyone in the waiting room?
Um, not right now.
Well, let's give this thirty more seconds.
I'll go ahead and.
This is Don, can you hear me?
Yes, Commissioner Bradley, welcome.
Yes, I've been trying for an hour and a half to get you. Okay, I'm glad it's working.
I'm very glad you're here, we are, um, on agenda item six B.
Okay, thank you. I'll try to catch up.
Now, you're, you're just in time to move to close public comment.
Oh, well, for the RDRC, yeah, the RDRC meeting, uh, I could hear them, but they couldn't hear me, so this is, progress is being made.
And, and through, um, through the chair, Commissioner Bradley, were you able to, um, were you able to hear this last?
Present? Yes.
You are, okay, great, good, thank you.
This is Commissioner Dugan, I will move that we close public hearing on this matter.
Do I have a second?
Bradley will second.
All right, Lisa, roll call please.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ruth?
Yes.
And Chair Garvey?
Yes. All right.
Bradley, yes.
Commissioner Bradley, did you want to make a comment?
I just wanted to vote yes at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, noted.
I'll just, uh, I'll just make the observation that, um, you know, we're not being called this evening to, uh, determine the merits of this list or determine if they've been appropriately priced or what have you, or even prioritized, I believe. I think our purview is, do they relate to our general plan with a sufficient nexus that we do not have concerns to explore it further? Um, I've reviewed the whole list, uh, it's consistent with what I think we have generally spent money on and I see that staff has dutifully called out a strategic plan objective for each and every item of capital spend in our twenty twenty-one budget, so I'm supportive of this, uh, of this matter.
Yeah, I, I've also reviewed the list and, and I agree that, um, that the items are all consistent with the, um, in conformance with the general plan.
Bradley will agree with that, both, both the previous commissioner comments.
I would agree with that as well, there is consist, that, that it is consistent with the general plan.
Ruth, Commissioner Dugan, I will move that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution finding the fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one capital improvement program is in conformance with the City of San Carlos general plan based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report.
Bradley will second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, Alisa, roll call please.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ruth?
Yes.
And Chair Garvey?
Yes. All right, moving on to the next agenda item, reports, correspondence and general information, a report on recent city council actions. Lisa, do you have anything for us this evening?
Uh, I think the, one of the most pertinent things and the commission is already aware of and learned this evening is that the city council will be, um, discussing the East Side Planning Initiative. Again, this was part of their, uh, strategy, one of their strategic objectives that they adopted, um, earlier this year on February the twenty-fourth to move forward with an initiative. And now, um, what is being presented, uh, to the council will, will be some options for how they can go forward with that. Um, staff had recommended that there be a pause on this in the context of looking at the different, um, at the budget and what we were asked to do in terms of, um, reducing our budget. Um, and the council, uh, made it known that they would still like to go forward, um, in some way, and some options will be presented to them on September, uh, the twenty-eighth, based upon their request at their meeting held on August twenty-fourth. So for those of you that, um, want to follow this, I would encourage you to watch that city council meeting on September the twenty-eighth. Um, and that is all I have on, uh, item seven A.
All right, thank you, moving on to, uh, the next item, Planning Commission comments or reports, anything from my fellow commissioners?
Yes, uh, I would like the record to show that, um, two staff planners, uh, Lisa Perez, uh, our planning manager now, and Lisa Costa Sanders, a principal planner now, uh, be commended for the work that they both did on this, this night's meeting, that you can tell how much work has had to gone into both these big items. Thank you, this is Bradley.
All right, uh, thank you for that, uh, and I'll add that, uh, one day earlier this week, I went on a, a tour of a new, uh, NBC Bio Labs, uh, laboratory that just opened and was populated here in San Carlos. I think there was a lot of interest in this and I believe some of my fellow commissioners may have been on, uh, another tour. It was wonderful to see this building, uh, so, uh, energy efficient, so many, uh, Energy Star, uh, appliances, uh, from a transportation standpoint, I, I saw the bike lockers, I saw the bike parking, um, it was, and it just, the materials in the building were beautiful, uh, the whole landscaping looks great, I really enjoyed going on this tour and appreciate that staff, um, uh, was able to organize this and I believe a couple of my fellow commissioners may have gone on, uh, another tour. So it was an opportunity for several of us to see the new building.
Yeah, Dave Root and myself went on, uh, last Wednesday, I believe, and I agree with everything you said, Ellen, good job. It's, it's unusual, it's the first time in four and a half years now that, that, uh, that I've been on the commission, that we've done something like this. And I was a little worried, you know, it was gonna be kind of a brainwashed job, but, uh, I learned a lot and, uh, I, I wouldn't hesitate to do something as long as it's, it's factual and informative, and this was, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradley, well said. Any other planning commission comments?
And, and Lisa Perez was, was with our, our team.
Yeah, I, I appreciated the tour as well and quite impressed with the innovative approach they're taking. It's nice to have the diversity of business models in our community, so that serves a particular niche, probably different than the Alexandria, um, segment that they're serving.
And they, they intend to do, uh, one or two more in San Carlos. They have one in San Francisco, um, before the one in, that we saw in San Carlos.
Yeah.
Do the NBC graduates, uh, hope to join the Alexandria district when they grow up?
I do. It's never too late to have a happy childhood, someone said.
All right, uh, let's move on to correspondence, uh, Lisa?
And no correspondence this evening.
All right, any planning staff comments, reports and updates on current projects?
Uh, yes, um, the next regular scheduled meeting with the Planning Commission is set for October the fifth, however, there are no, um, projects that are, that are quite ready to be presented at that time, so we would be conven- re-convening, that meeting would then be canceled. Um, so our next meeting would be held on Monday, October the nineteenth. So we will, uh, make sure to send out, um, a courtesy email. I know with, um, all of the working at home and the cancellation of some meetings from one meeting to the next and then reconvening is a little bit hard to keep track of, so, um, I'll go ahead and send out a courtesy email to the commission just as a. Is a little bit hard to keep track of, so um I'll go ahead and send out a courtesy email to the commission just as a reminder. Then um, the other thing I wanted to mention, and just so uh, uh, just by way of update, the ADU ordinance is set to go to. Uh, city council on October the twelfth. And you may recall that that is something that this commission recommended um go forward. However, it was um decided to be placed on pause because of some legal questions that were raised. And uh we had those vetted, and now the project is ready to proceed with the city coun, with the city council. So um, we will um be taking that forward on October the twelfth. And that is all I have for you this evening, other than uh to note that I did hear the commission's comments and concerns about um kind of taking a. A, a bigger picture or requesting to be updated on kind of a bigger picture perspective on all of the projects underway. Um, on the east side of the city, so I will be communicating that to the director and we'll be discussing how we can bring that forward. Um, but I think um, you know, one thing that you'll, that I definitely recommend is watching the city council meeting on September the twenty eighth. Because that will provide a good overview, but we will be sure to do one with the commission as well. And um just as a um, you know, an invitation, um I invite all of you to email me. If you have any thoughts, comments, concerns or or questions about anything that may be going on or something that you would like to know more about. Um, it doesn't necessarily will always mean that we can hop right on that and place that on the next agenda. But we can definitely um make sure to just underscore, you know, there's an open invitation um to send. Um, send me your comments and send any questions you have or any inquiries you have or things that you think would be helpful. And we can start, you know, putting together, you know, um, you know, it could be a work program for the commission. Um, not necessarily um new projects, but just an, a schedule for different updates about what's going on. On um the topics um that are relevant to this commission that would be helpful for you to know about and stay on top of. As things uh move forward down the pipeline.
Sounds good. Um, Bradley, again, I do want to express my appreciation uh for James uh Yakaponi. Who is our alternate RDRC chair and he handled the meeting. I could hear the meeting, I could hear Jim, but nobody could hear me. And, but I did follow it through and um he acted like an old-time pro. Very good. Three cases went through in an hour and a half. It wa, it was, it was close. We were. Just a couple of minutes before seven, working right up to the end. Good job, Jim, and thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, Don. You know, um, uh, first, uh, great staff support and second, uh. Everything I've learned about uh leading a meeting, I learned from you, so well done to you.
Oh my goodness, you're in trouble. Thank you, Don.
Happy to help.
All right, uh, and with that, uh, thank you, everyone. This meeting is adjourned.
Good job, Ellen.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Bye.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye-bye.